Just sit down.
It's like we had a great wish.
That's very courteous of you, but.
In order to comply with Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on May 29, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mr. McElveen. All those in favor? That's unanimous. I now call on Ms. Hines for her motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board permit an individual to enter onto school property in limited circumstances and according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Keesgamar, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Abstaining by Mr. Wilson. That motion carries. Now we will go on to the second part of our agenda, which is...
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I have a process question about the prior session we just concluded before going into closed.
Yes.
So I know that these are our Advisory Committee reports, but the Board members were bringing up several sort of next steps of what we might want in accompanying these reports.
Ms. McLaughlin, we don't have next steps for reports such as this. I do know that staff took note of those discussion items, but our policy does not call for taking next steps for Advisory Committee reports.
That's fine. Just to be clear, there isn't a policy about it, whether you're saying it's your understanding that the practice is we don't do that?
That is my understanding, Ms. McLaughlin.
I mean, otherwise then, I'm a little...I guess I'm a little disappointed in the sense that we do a Q and A to get information about the reports, but basically relying on whether or not staff accurately captured some of the questions or next steps of information we want, I just don't know why we wouldn't benefit from just being clear that some of the next steps we were asking for are captured, because too often, the Board finds that the things that we expected for a follow-up based on our work session, and this is still a work session, and it's not captured, so...
Ms. McLaughlin, the reason we don't take next steps for Committee reports is because they are Committee reports, and we inquire by the...inquire of the Committee responses to questions. We do have people ask specific...for specific data, and it is my expectation and understanding that staff, which these are all recorded, staff and Dr. Braybrand do take note during the session, and he will use the opportunity through his Braybrand brief and by staff's commitment to providing information that...which they have in the past session, that we will get the information requested. If you don't...
Well, having served for eight years, I will tell you, it's been my experience that even our Advisory Committees get frustrated that they spend a year coming with recommendations, Board members speak to those recommendations, and then sometimes staff doesn't even answer to their own reports. So I wasn't trying to overcomplicate it. It would just seem to me a benefit to even just capturing some of the key pieces that Board members want to make sure as a result of the valuable work our Committees have done for a year. This is our only time to talk with one another about what our Advisory Committees bring to us, so it's fine if that is your desire as the Chair, to just say we won't do it, and that's fine.
Ms. McLaughlin, it's my understanding that this is...that's the process that has been followed in previous years. Ms. Hines.
Yeah, I would just say that's my recollection as well, that...and I think maybe one of the reasons is just, you know, how we do next steps, we take another hour to do next steps, right? And I think we already...you know, we have three Advisory Committees to report to us. A middle ground might be, I mean, what I just did tonight, which was I saw the recommendations, and there was a follow-up that I could do by email, asking a budget question, asking for that to be in the FY21 discussion. So I think there are things we can do as Board members to follow up with each other and the superintendent by email, and, you know, I don't want us to spend too much time on this process question, because we have people waiting, and it's definitely my recollection that this is how we do it for Committee reports, so...
Yes. Mr. Moon?
I don't particularly enjoy laboring on this point, because my recollection is that Board had, you know, multiple opportunities to discuss about how to move forward after we received the Committee reports. To every single report, staff responds and provides steps or responses, usually by September timeframe. And then, and then, you know, it will be incumbent upon the Board, after having seen the steps responses, if the Board wants to revisit some of the issues and some recommendations. Sometimes we're able to do it, but a lot of times, because of the workload on the part of the Board, we have chosen not to do it. But we can always do that. But for tonight, I...you know, I prefer to just move on in, as we have, you know, traditionally done, because we've got two more reports, we're already 40 minutes behind.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Dr. Braybrand, I saw that you wanted to say something.
Just to respect the conversations taking place, yes, Pat Hines sent me email. I've already followed up with Lee. It's on its way. And Mara took notes, and I will loop back with Sloan and her tomorrow for follow-up. I really have tried hard. I admit, in my first year, there were a lot of next steps that fell through the cracks. I guess my evaluation's coming up, so you'll let me know how I did this year, but I think we're doing better, and it's certainly the spirit of tonight to make sure we're taking any loose ends that are brought up and going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will proceed with the Title I presentation. We very much appreciate Ms. Waltz, Mr. or Ms. Denome, and Mr. LaHoffman being here. And so I believe, Ms. Waltz, you're kicking it off?
Thank you very much. And we have two of our Title I Parent Advisory Committee Executive Board members with us, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves. But they have worked incredibly hard during the course of this year to set goals and to follow through on those goals, and I think you'll be very interested to hear what they have to say. It's an intersection of Title I and Family Engagement, and we're just so happy to have our guests with us today.
Good evening. My name is Erin Osset. I've been a member of the T-PAC for three years now. This is my second year on the Executive Board, and this year I'm serving as Vice Chair. I have two children at Woodburn Elementary, in kindergarten and second grade.
My name is Mike Waltz. I am the Chair of the Executive Board. Don't ask me how long I've been on the Executive Board, but it's my first year as Chair. I have a sixth grader at Glasgow, a third grader at Belvedere. Wanted to thank the support and the partnership we've had with the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement with Kathleen, Yvonne, Renee in the back, and Lisa, and we also have one of our Executive Board members, Heather Hale, as well. So thank you all for coming out and just for your support all year long. So this year, we set out to first, better define ourselves, not define ourselves for the community at large, let the Title I representatives know what we were about, how we differed from a PTA or PTO, the real power that we have in having a voice directly before the school board. We wanted to inform parents more about advanced academic programming, also empower them to navigate through the special education process, really from the parent viewpoint, because it is a parent advisory committee. We need to hear from parents, and you'll hear more about the panel that we had at one of our meetings. And also, two community resources we get...we were able to hear from is Homework Helpers and Grand Involve. And a discussion about how to engage families better in the development of the Family Engagement Policy and the Compact. Statutorily, it mandates that certain things are done, and we really had to look in, see, and be honest about they weren't being as done as well as they should have been, and have some process changes to enhance that, and you'll hear more about that as well. First recommendation that we had is facilitate greater communication between principals and assistant principals and the T-PAC. Administrators will be provided by Title I staff, meeting dates through various methods, and receive post-meeting information, including communication between principals and their respective T-PAC representatives. If you recall from last year, one of our recommendations was to encourage principal or vice-principal attendance at at least one meeting throughout the year. Reason being, because I don't need to go all the way down the road, but we always had engaged, you know, sessions where we always ran out of time, and we still had trouble building a critical mass, and we kind of looked at how this group is populated. It's from principals. And so we probably...we suppose that principals were not as well-versed on what we were, or at all. There's been a lot of turnover in the county, so we wanted to start that front end, getting principals more engaged in the process, and as a result, just the attendance alone...there we go. If you notice, it's on page 15, and what's key about that is every meeting that we had this year surpassed the attendance of the respective meeting from the previous year. Gave us more representatives on the Committee, allowed us to expand the size of our Executive Board. You know, we have a large county, we have a lot of schools, and we need to increase our capacity, so as life comes up and things happen with family where we're not able to be there, we're not down to two people, you know, planning out an agenda. And I think that's something that we want to build on in terms of, we didn't reach all the schools. We want to continue the efforts. We want to help principals prepare and schedule, you know, their attendance at our meetings, so as early as possible that Title I office can reach out to them and get on their calendar. I think we have our schedule already set for the next year, so as early as they can get that. But also, when meetings come up, the same reminder that the Committee gets, principals should get, and following the meeting, while we don't want to dictate how each representative should engage with their principal, because the relationship and dynamic is different. We don't know how long the principal's been there, or if the representative is new in the school. We wanted to be some formalized, whether it's an email, whether it's a phone call, whether it's a sit-down, where after every meeting, there is some type of discussion, some feedback, some debriefing, so the principal, if they're not able to be there, or whether they are, they can just share perspectives and take whatever knowledge is gleaned and serve their communities. There is a testimonial on, I think we saw the testimony on page six, and really, more than anything we could say, it's that, from a principal who attended, I think, four of our meetings. And just the impact that had, I mean, I think it speaks for itself in the importance of getting more principals to the table, where they can realize the value that, you know, the Committee is able to deliver.
Since I started with the T-PAC, we make an effort each year to reach out to the representatives that are provided to the Title I office before we start our general session meetings, kind of provide an invite, some oversight, something of that nature. In my initial year, I had no idea what this Committee was about. It wasn't explained well to me. I wasn't sure what I was going to take away from this. But I showed up, and what I got was a lot of knowledge of resources, ideas from other people and what they were doing. And it took quite a deal of communication with the principal and with the parent liaison to kind of see how others' ideas could be of benefit in our individual school. So I think the process of inviting principals to these meetings, giving them more awareness of what the panel is about, has really made them more invested in identifying their T-PAC representative, knowing that it's someone that will actually attend the meetings, whether in person or virtual. I've attended several virtual meetings myself, and actually communicate with others and digest this information and see how it best can be used in the school. It was, I think, very encouraging this year to have at least one...there may have been at least two at every single general session meeting, and I know my individual principal attended in person and virtually, and it was interesting to see their reaction to the parent perspective, and then vice versa, get their reaction as an administrator to the ideas being kicked around and see, you know, oh, this might work this way, and things that parents don't realize. But the engagement of the principals has really drawn in more representatives and made people feel like more like stakeholders. There's something here that's valuable, and I think that we really have made strides this year in increasing the attendance, and I think that continuing with this process and making sure that principals and administrators are invited to these meetings and ensured to get information, takeaways from these will only further this panel's purpose.
So, recommendation two, it's a long one. Ensure greater access to advanced learning experiences for every student within Title I schools through the following. Placing a full-time, culturally proficient, advanced academic resource teacher in all Title I schools, who will advocate for exposure to higher-level thinking and increased access for advanced programming. Provide earlier and more comprehensive information to parents about academic placement testing, opportunities, and programs, and provide greater access to multidisciplinary science, technology, reading, engineering arts, mathematics, opportunities within the classroom, so more children have the experience and preparation for higher-level courses. So the discussion we had was, and I want to say, maybe the discussion as we were formulating the report, was insightful, because we don't even have the same perspective between parents and some principals on whether advanced academics is available for all. I remember Dr. Braybrand's comments at the FCPS Leadership Conference, where he said, "Shouldn't all students have access to advanced academics?" I think a question that hasn't been answered is, do all students have access? And even if they do, could it be greater? I think we all agree it can be. And in Title I, while we knew that you were considering this, the budget amendment, you know, we wanted to get behind that, just reinforce the importance of having a full-time and not just a position. Culturally proficient, somebody who recognizes, values the communities, our children, will advocate for them, not discourage. Be there, identify them early, and even if they're not in AAP, which it's a program, but it's not everything. Advanced learning can happen, it's a philosophy, and whether they're in that program is something else. Somebody who is making sure that students are getting these high academic experiences, these different ways of thinking. And if you recall, last year, we talked about the...our effort to also rebrand what it means to be a Title I school. As there are folks who keep their kids away based on what the kids look like who go into the schools, not only would they find that the instruction is of the highest caliber, but knowing that advanced learning is taking place would also be another rebuttal to whatever false notions they have, and that needs to be something we talk about more. Whatever advanced learning is taking place, we as parents need to be hearing it not as a, oh, guess what, it's a standard. This is our standard, this is what we have. We should be hearing it at back-to-school night, we should be hearing it at the welcome-back to school, we should be hearing it just at parent-teacher conferences. It should just be a part of normal business, and right now, it isn't. The only session that I've received or was present at, or talked about advanced academic, was just AAP, you know, whatever the level of services are, but there was never an explanation, even though if you see, you know, from teachers that we know around, in schools around the county, high-quality and rigorous and really challenging thinking is taking place all over. But we don't talk about it enough, and we need to. At the same time, we want to...we have to look at the equity component, not just from socioeconomics. We need to look at racially how the outcomes. The Braybrand briefing from last spring showed the percent, the admissions statistics for the class of 2022. And out of, let's see, 485 students, 2.1% are black, 4.7% are Hispanic. And that's not just a Title I issue, it's really the whole county, and just because we represent the Title I Committee does not mean we don't advocate and speak up for other families. You know, this Committee is a, kind of like a thought leader can be a diagnosis for greater symptoms that the county is going through. We hope to be able to offer solutions that can benefit everybody. And there need to be, there needs to be more targeted and specific outreach to groups who have been underrepresented, because personally, I've experienced it, tired of kids being represented, overrepresented in discipline. Why don't we be represented in something positive? We need to make a concerted effort, and anybody who has a problem with that, show them the discipline. Show them the numbers and say, do you have a problem with us? Reaching out in a positive way. But as far as this Committee, and what we look to have done, it's get our children prepared for the Iowa test, which comes in sixth grade. Finding it out now, found it out now. We should be learning about this in second and third grade. Okay, if you don't make AAP, does that mean you don't have a shot to place high enough on the test to be eligible for TJ or the IB diploma? It doesn't mean that you have to go, it's just that you've had that type of exposure, that high-level thinking that gives you a rigorous career and a life, you know, beyond school. They have to get exposure earlier. I don't think anybody would argue that any race of child is superior to another. It's about experience, it's about access, it's about opportunities, it's about exposure. We really have to do a better job at exposing them to these. You have a comment? Okay. I think that's...did you have anything to add on that?
I think one of the points made in the recommendation about providing earlier access, I just want to stress that this is a lot of what I've found in this report after digesting it and rereading it and putting it all together is, I feel like a lot of this is preventative medicine. Like, we need to get in there earlier. Like, people need to have a list. This is what is here, this is who you can look to, you know, day one, August, back-to-school, August welcome walk, something that, you know, can be provided to everyone. So when you have questions on the first day of school, you can walk in and say, here are my questions, where can I go for these? This is what I've read, where do I find out more about it? So I think this is one of those areas, in advanced academics, when we had this general session meeting and subsequent discussions with some of the principals, it was mentioned that they agreed with this idea and that it should be something where in kindergarten, you should start, you know, parents should be aware that they can start saving their children's work to build a file for their application for Level Four if they aren't admitted based on a test score. I went through the application this year. I am a very active member of my school, PTA, this board. I was not aware in kindergarten that it was something that I could have been putting aside for, and it was something that I kind of scrambled to put aside for this year. So I think just the awareness, if people such as Mike and I are not aware of these things, clearly there's some kind of disconnect, because we're very active members of the community. So I just want to make sure that there's some sort of level playing field where all parents kind of have the access to ask the questions that need to be asked at the earlier
Okay. Our third recommendation was to explore in further detail the idea of a mentoring program by parents with personal experiences, such as those on the panel that presented to the T-PAC, to assist parents in navigating the special education identification and implementation process, and the ability to use the Advisory Council for Students with Disabilities to identify FCPS resources for parent advocacy, as well as establish groups such as the Special Education PTA for broadening parent knowledge of processes and non-FCPS resources. So this was the second year that we devoted a whole general session meeting to special education. Last year, our focus was heavy on the FCPS resources and had speakers from different areas that could provide information for questions and navigation. This year, we took a different approach. We had parents come and speak to us. One of the parents played a dual role, assistant principal, Scott Ralston came and spoke as a parent as well, and we had two T-PAC, a former T-PAC member and a current T-PAC member who also have experience in the area that spoke to us. We felt, from the parent committee perspective, we really wanted to get the personal experience and have them speak to their navigation of the process, the pitfalls that they experienced, and the resources that they found most helpful. It was a very personal session, you know, we tried to keep them to time, but they had a lot to say. And then we also did have representatives from the Parent Resource Center, and we had Armando Perry available as well at that meeting. It was, I think it was our highest-attended meeting this year, and there were lots of questions from the audience, but this is another area that I feel that, based on our looking into this process and hearing the parent perspective, this is another preventative medicine issue. This is another issue that needs to have a checklist. And I was here, I listened to the previous presentation and how we're looking at this, and we want to get into this special education and have knowledge of what's going on with these children from ages two, three, as early as we can in order to help them. And being our second year, I felt it was a little unusual that prior to this meeting, we didn't have knowledge of the Council for Students with Disabilities, but it has been brought to our attention now, and we have looked into it somewhat, and we think that it is a very useful resource for parents. I've read a lot of the minutes, I've seen their public comment section, how they allow people to come and speak about their experiences as well, and I think that our recommendation really lends itself to some sort of cooperation between the two Committees in fostering a mentoring panel. They obviously have people that come out to them with public comments, seeking to express their opinions, seeking for assistance to highlight resources, and that's exactly what we're recommending here, that we use these parent perspectives, people who have gone through the process, to really identify what has helped them most. And one of the big takeaways from the panel was, all of our speakers were well-educated adults that had, you know, were born in the USA, spoke English, and a lot of the questions from the general session were, how much of this information is available in other languages? You know, what, what kind of presentation and availability are we seeing for those persons who have to navigate this process with their children who don't, aren't native speakers, who don't have the level of education that those parents on our panel had, and still had a difficult time navigating it? It's a very personal and emotional issue, and I think hearing the parent perspective is very important for anyone who's going to have to go through this. So I think that that's really where our emphasis lies on special education this year. There are resources available. I think the county's doing a great job with this Council for Students with Disabilities, and I just think that there needs to be a little bit more visibility for everything. I, you know, it was another thing that I was surprised that I didn't know about, and now I do, and I'm glad I do, and I am happy to help publicize that through all the roles that I play. But the, there needs to be more visibility to these issues and the resources available.
The fourth recommendation, explore the feasibility of offering Homework Helpers in middle schools where students at Title I schools may attend, and foster collaboration between the Title I team and Grand Involve as an enlight partner and its volunteers in order to enhance cultural proficiency awareness. So I'm going to address those in reverse order. You know, Grand Involve, I mean, they, they're a force. You know, they were just received an award, is it last week, earlier this week? And, I mean, they're definitely moving ahead, and we just want to make sure that as they enter our schools, their volunteers are culturally competent and proficient to come into our schools. And so we want to make sure they work closely with Title I, because even the best intentions, if not well-informed, can cause, you know, less-than-ideal results. And so we want to make sure they work closely with Title I, because even the best intentions, if not well-informed, can cause, you know, less than ideal results. Regarding the homework helpers, it's very specific, and the reason why is because they came to us. They're not a private vendor looking to offer something they were kids, taking leadership before they were even asked to. And the benefit of the program, it's a bridge between middle school and elementary school. It can really strengthen sense of a community. And even from some of the testimonials, it, a parent is from Japan, kids are American, has trouble helping with English, and the fact that they can step in and provide that. Fact that the voice of a teacher or any familiar authority figure can get tuned out, having a different voice that can convey information to them. Even some of the things we were talking about earlier, preparing them for learning experiences. These are highly successful in school children who are teaching other kids, so they can prepare them for some of these tests and help expose them to some of these things we're looking for them to have. But we won't really know until they get to get out there and actually have a program. It's been fledgling for years because they need support, and we want to give them a bump. Feasibility does not mean mandate or requirement, just explore, have a conversation, see what it takes through parent-school community, figure out what can be done. But until they have an opportunity to really grow, we don't know how good it could be. We don't know the areas that they need support in. There's just really not, nowhere, there's no, no idea, you know, of what the program is ultimately destined for. So it's really on their behalf, you know, that we're asking for the middle schools. There's plenty of elementary schools, especially Title I schools, who are looking for the support, and they have their hands up, but if they don't have a feeder source, you know, their hands are just going to stay up. So we ask that whatever discussions, you know, whatever encouraging, just whatever it takes to have middle schools just take, take a look at, take a look. When, they don't understand necessarily the process about, you know, if you reach out to somebody with an email or two, things get lost in the shuffle. But if somebody tells you, oh, this sounds good, and then you don't hear from them again, it can be discouraging. And we don't want them to lose the leadership they're already growing, you know, before adulthood. So that's just really, you know, focused for them.
This is the second year that they've come to us, and, you know, I believe we spoke about this last year as well. These kids really have the initiative. It, it's disheartening to not be able to automatically provide them with what it is that they need to make this program successful. You know, I see the benefit of all different types of mentorship in my school, and I think that having the student-to-student perspective and, you know, getting that learning experience from an older student is really beneficial, especially in a Title I school. You know, the, the class numbers are lower because of the Title I, and, you know, they're going to go to these tremendous-sized middle schools, and having some sort of connection through an older student there, kind of a window into what there is to expect. So I, I think it's something that should definitely be considered to see if we can facilitate this in any way, either on a school-by-school basis or a pyramid-level type of feeder basis. But, you know, the initiative and the desire to succeed is there, and it's definitely a program that could grow if we were to foster it.
And last is our charge for 2019-20. Increase parent capacity and comprehension of Title I to include providing information and materials in various languages, and explore the impact that behavior, health, and well-being have on students' educational success. Number one, it's embarrassing, and I really want to take ownership for it for not making it a priority. We have all these meetings, we have all these topics, but we only have it in English. It's disgraceful if we're talking about what we're doing for families and we're not even having the integrity to make sure that they get it. So we need to prioritize whatever it takes through our remote sessions, our materials that are sent home every year that tell parents about Title I, our meetings, our outreach. It has to get better. I don't know exactly the technical ways how, but it has to improve. We just can't keep looking at each other and speaking English and expect families to feel welcome and that we're reaching out and, it doesn't seem sincere. It's almost, for some folks, it could be almost like you're teasing them. Oh, we have all this stuff, you just have to come to us, come to us. We're supposed to be reaching out. So that's just something that, you know, needs to be a priority. It's kind of like a timeout. Before we want to provide all this other great information, let's make sure that we have an audience that can digest it and appreciate it. And even if they are English speakers, getting materials in native language sends a message to them how much they're valued, and we need to do a better job of that. The other part of the recommendation, of the recommended charge, we intentionally brought, because we have a few areas we want to explore. We want to look into more trauma-informed, you know, the impact of trauma. And while all children, all people can be subject to it, poverty as an added multiplier can have many more effects and other impacts, and a lot of our families and students can be feeling those impacts. Also, behavior, we can tie that to discipline. What does it look like in Title I schools? You know, should discipline really be the word in Title I schools? Should it be restorative justice, should it be something else? You know, what foundation are we establishing for children? If in elementary, they can be suspended for nonviolent act without progressive communication with parents to intervene, to have whatever's going on? It's happening. Kids are being suspended, and not really justifiable. So we need to look into, you know, is this the message? Is what we want to have in our schools, in our elementary schools? And Title I, I don't know exactly what I, if we have, I wouldn't say it's a five-year strategic plan, but at some point, we want to have, what is a highly functioning Title I school have? What are the elements? So we want to look at teachers, best practices, teachers that are highly successful in Title I schools. They can share, you know, what works, what doesn't work. We could also look at more diverse teacher population. Let's look at the students. And doesn't mean that just because you may look like them, you can identify or be a better teacher, but there are some similarities, and it provides students a modeling that is implicit, that a lot of them may not have right now. We also want to look at the welcoming environment, you know? How welcoming are schools? It's not just a paper, it's not just high when you come into the office. Are you getting a phone call, a good phone call? Are you getting a note, a positive note? You have to come in because something happened, or do they just want you to come in to say, we're just really glad you're here? We're glad your child is here. So we want to explore those deeper as we're, like I said, building this model, you know, what a Title I school, Title I schools should look like.
One of our focuses for this year's charge was to maximize the impact of school-based family engagement teams. And we had discussed last year the school-family compact for Title I schools, and we took a look at that this year, and there was a change in the date of when the schools need to have that presented. And we spent some time discussing really the input and the feedback that's received from the school community when principals work on this agreement with them. And part of our emphasis was that, again, not everyone was aware that this compact existed, and we wanted to make sure that parents were aware and involved in the process. So the recommendation to change the, the date, and that the Title I office actually did change the date this year, really provides access for the administrators to have the span of the year from the beginning of school till the spring in order to listen to their students, listen to their parents, to the stakeholders, and involve them in the process. We really took it to heart in my school, and we managed to compose a panel with only weeks to spare, and we met as a panel. We had four different parents, along with the principal and the parent liaison, and we were able to get a translator, as we had a Spanish-speaking parent as well. And we all took a hard look at the compact and said, you know, does everybody understand the parts that we put in this that aren't template? Does everybody feel that they're experiencing this? Is there anything that you'd like to add, anything you want to highlight? And I think that this, the shift in time is really a good way to engage principals and families in this process together, that you just have the opportunity to learn more about what really are the best practices in your school, and what could be further enhanced by cooperation with such a family engagement panel. And I think that that is something that we really like to focus on in the future, because when the school really is able to connect with different members of the community and discuss what they feel is, are the best practices in the school, and what is most successful for their students from all different standpoints of the community and the administration and the parents, I think that's going to be a more successful process where those compacts and agreements will actually have some level of impact at the school, and something that is a basis for reflection come the spring, say, how did we do on this? Is this something that we need to enhance? Is this something that we need to change? And, you know, highlighting that at our committee meetings is, again, another way to share information and ideas and kind of level the playing fields and allow Title I schools to all have access to what each one individually considers a best practice.
So Ms. Ossiter, Mr. Roltz?
Very quickly in closing, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Evans. She's not here, I knew she wouldn't be here, but I wanted to thank her. This will be the last, obviously the last meeting that we would have had with her. When I started this whole journey, she welcomed me and other PTA presidents who were home, but what she really did was provide a presence and let us know that school board members are ally for us. So I really appreciate that, and it kind of charged me to fight for other people's families, not just mine. Also want to acknowledge our liaison, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, who's been a great source of support. We look forward to continuing that. Also, our outgoing executive board member is Jackie Johnson, who's retiring, so congratulations to her. And to my vice chair, who's been a great partner and friend, who Northern Virginia's loss will be Denver, Colorado's gain.
Thank you very much. You've done an excellent job in distilling a very comprehensive report, and we really appreciate the insights that you've shared with us this evening. I do have a number of board members that would like to provide comments and ask some questions. I'm going to start with Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you. As a social worker, a lot of your report speaks to my passion for what I hope for our children, which is to level that playing field and really make sure that all children have those pathways and opportunities to succeed. It was over 18 years ago that, you know, I had a kindergartner, my oldest of my three boys. I had no idea about what the Advanced Academic Program was, never heard of it. And my husband and I both have graduate degrees. It took to my third child, four years later, for me to even understand what the program was, how it worked, all the tests involved. So my first two boys, that was just not on our radar. We didn't know anything about, you know, oh, you could self-refer, all these things. And, you know, thankfully, they succeeded just as well as any child who came through the Advanced Academic, and our youngest son did go through it. But we need to make sure, as a division, I mean, here we are, almost 20 years later. What are we not doing to make sure that our families can learn about this early enough, understand it? Even just to tell your second grader, hey, they're going to be doing a test, don't goof around, don't decide that it's just not worth your time. Because, I mean, there are a lot of kids, they don't know why they're getting this test, and so if you're not focused that day, then as a second grader, somebody passes on you and says, okay, you don't necessarily have that. And I really loved how it was captured earlier, the philosophy of what advanced learning is. And so I thought you just captured that beautifully in your remarks. I also want to spotlight for my colleagues something else that you really brought up in the report, that Ms. Evans, not being here, I want to echo for something she and I, many others, have talked about, which is leveling the playing field for supports. Having been a PTA board member at the elementary school level, I got green-eyed monsters, seeing how some schools had tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of dollars per year for their elementary schools to fund field trips and lots of supports to enhance the learning. And so that is something that many of us have been talking about this year, and so I wanted you to know that you're channeling a lot of where this board is on it. And, and then just finally, I really appreciate the capturing about the poverty piece. I, I think it's a great challenge for our students, and too often, we're defining everything through one-dimensional buckets. Okay, we'll do this by, you know, breaking out by race. And yet, we're not looking at the fact that a lot of times, in terms of underrepresentation, we don't have poverty represented in our AAP program. We don't have poverty represented in TJ at all. And so we've, we've got to really be mindful of, of that very clear barrier we're seeing for our children across the board. So, great report, thank you so much for your time. Quick question, I'm, I'm working with a, with one of our newest committees. Who, who actually wrote this? Because my committee's asking me, like, does staff do this? Do the committee members do this? It's a great report, I'm just wondering who put all the time in.
Well, a lot of us did. We try and do it as a joint effort. Obviously, the introduction and the history of the panel comes from the Title I office, but the recommendations, we write on our own through the executive board. We seek direct feedback from the general session meetings. We always devote our last general session meeting for review and comment of the report that the executive board members have previously put together and worked on pieces. You know, we always sign it out, and then it comes back, and usually Mike and I finish it up. But, yeah, we do write all the recommendation pieces and everything ourselves.
It was outstanding. Thank you for your dedication this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Well, I, I'm not surprised that it was outstanding.
I did.
No, 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 I, I've been working with these guys, they're, they're, I've just, I've just so enjoyed working with everyone from the office to the parents, to, these are very well-attended committee meetings, very active parents. So I'm grateful because I feel like we can really dig our hands in, and I've been able to just give you guys information and you run with it. So it's just awesome. I, I want to just highlight a few things. Certainly, we've talked a lot about advanced academics, how every child should have access to it and earlier. And so as, I know we're not doing next steps, but Dr. Duran is here, and I know he's out of our equity office, and so I'd like to see a connection happen between this Title I committee and Dr. Duran, so that there can be some conversation there. So that's my first note for you guys, because I, you know, typically don't do it this way, but since everybody's here, the gang's all here. Really liked your comments on cultural proficiency, and I, I think that that may be some of the things that we can talk about with Dr. Duran and other staff members. These guys, these guys are amazing, I have to say. Dr. Bray Brand, you, you did a good job right here, just, I don't know who did it, but it was good. I, I love the comments about discipline because we, we, you know, the numbers are just flipped, right? When we start talking about where, where the diversity is represented in our advanced academics as opposed to discipline, why is there such a disparity? And I think that how we can dive into that, Dr. Bray Brand, is really going to be important. And this is the group, I have to tell you, to do it with, because it is such a representative group of parents that can really give you the level of feedback that I think we need, that's going to be honest. And it, it, you know, there could not be a better place to start. So I, that was my number two, is to use this to, to, to kind of balance out what should be happening with discipline, and how we can perhaps have some improvement. Love the communication piece, this is not going to be a surprise to you. I've been talking about communication to him all year, he's tied to that drum. But you guys said it for me, because I'm not sure that our community at large knows what our Title I schools are doing. And we have some amazing things happening, so that's another part of my communication piece. Number three, I have 11 seconds. So I also want to make sure with respect to the special education... So I also want to make sure with respect to special education, there are a number of groups I want to add to make sure that you guys know about SEPTA. We're putting together a task force. Special education ombudsman are all new things this year.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
I have one more thing, but I'll wait.
Go ahead. Just do it because we're gonna, we're running up against the clock. So if you can finish it off in about 15 seconds.
The best way to identify those best practices, I think, overall, is what, one of the things that we want to talk about.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Hines, followed by Mr. Moon, I do have you.
Okay. Well, this is very meaty, so we're all going to be rushing through our comments. There's a lot of good stuff here to talk about. I was the liaison a few years ago and I came to a few meetings and I remember thinking it was a really great group that was doing a lot of communication within and without and all of that. And it was, seemed really useful. But this report this year, I feel like you've turned the corner from that to a whole different purpose, which is to help us in instructional policy, which is so exciting to me. So getting right to your recommendations, I think your recommend, your first recommendation to continue to communicate with principals and school-based admins. I assume you're going to keep doing that. You're going to keep having them come. That's wonderful. Recommendation two about AAP, you know that we have put AARTs at Title I schools in the budget and we're going to do that next year and the year after. We will finish full-time AART in every Title I school. And I just want to say, I think that your report and your recommendation, number two, about AAP should be Exhibit A in our AAP and Equity Independent Review, which the Board has commissioned and will begin very soon. Because you hit it exactly right. To me, it's not about, it's about communicating and, you know, getting more kids to know and parents to know it's available, but the real true level playing field is every classroom, every day for every kid. That's where the challenging curriculum has to be. And that's, that's what you talk about, which is tremendous. I completely agree with you. Recommendation three on mentoring, as Ms. Keys-Gamarra said, I think there are a lot of opportunities, if you guys want to continue to work on that, for you to meet with ACSD and maybe the SEPTA folks and, you know, get, just help them understand the need at your schools. And then, I guess, finally, just your charge for next year, I want to thank you for doing that. It's something that we as a board put in place for this year and I'm glad to see those charges are there. I know it's extra work for you now, but it's so helpful for us to know what you're going to be talking about for next year and talk amongst ourselves a little bit about, you know, the charge itself. It sounds like that it has come from your experience with the sense you have of work you haven't done yet that you think is really important and that's the best kind of charge there is, to me. That it should not really come from us. It should come from your work. And then I noticed that you also have mental health and wellness of the child. That's another thing you're going to be focusing on. And I don't think we heard any about that. Would you mind just quickly giving us a little background on why you're going to, is that okay if we do that? Okay.
We've been having communications with, oh, I, I don't know if you all did, but I spoke with Jenna White. She is on the FCC PTA and she is really, in this county, becoming a leader in the trauma-informed curriculum. And through that, we want to really dig in because the impact of trauma and the incidence of trauma is more heavily felt, especially in this country, with people of color, people impoverished. And when we look at, you know, what are barriers to this? What are this to that? What are obstacles? There's a lot right here. We got to start breaking it down. We have to really provide a diagnosis of, not what's wrong with you, it's what happened to you. What happened before you got to this school? I can't get you to sit down and pay attention. Do you know what my weekend was like? We really have to dig into what these students are going through. I mean, all of our kids are over inundated with technology and information now, to a degree we were kind of shielded from. But compound that with a difficult and a burdensome home life and it just, you know, it's staggering.
Mr. Moon, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for the excellent recommendations. Again, I'm going to just comment upon and also ask some questions regarding a part of the recommendation from number two, recommendation number two, where it is stated that we should be providing earlier and more comprehensive information to parents about several different things. I fully agree with that. Just like Mrs. McLaughlin, I was not necessarily a parent with all the information when I was raising my own kids. I certainly didn't get those information from my own parents, who came here as immigrants, didn't speak the language, didn't know the American school system. So I didn't get those information from my parents. So fortunately, I had older friends, older parents, you know, who had raised their own children before I had to do my own. And I got very good information from them as to, you know, when to start and where to start, where the programs are, et cetera. I didn't necessarily get those information from my kids' schools, like, because first of all, we had to start even before they got to public schools, right? Had to start early. And those information, if they can be available to all our parents, not just me, not my, not just my friends, but that should be available to all the parents. And hopefully, if they do not have older, older parents help them out, maybe through our schools. But here is my question. Providing, how do you suggest that school system, schools do provide in one manner those information? Because, you know, as I see it, having information, whole lot of information is one thing, but how to put them into actual use, good use, practical use, realistic use, could be another. Again, I had friends who taught me how to do step-by-step and gave me all the information, even including how much a certain program would cost. And if you cannot afford that program, here's an alternative you may want to look into, whether, whether you expect our schools, school administrators or counselors or teachers be able to sit down with all the parents, be able to provide all those information.
Well, I think the answer isn't providing it in one single way. I think the answer is more about providing it in several different ways. Because this type of information is absorbed, absorbed by different parents in different manners. You know, I, I feel that having an initial type of information in a back-to-school packet is a starting point, but I think it needs to be available to all parents via different media sources, email, Twitter, you know, even text messages that are sent by the parent liaisons to Spanish-speaking communities or other communities such as that. And I think it would be very important for each classroom teacher to be well-versed in this and have an aspect of parent-teacher conferences in the fall, when you're first starting out and they're first giving feedback on your child, just as a initial step, say, part of that conference, five minutes can be devoted to saying, you know, here are the current Advanced Academics that are being offered at the school. Here are those that I think might be good for your child. Here are a few more that you might be interested in in three years down the road. Here's where you can find additional information about that. You know, and I think the amendment to add the full-time AART to every school is really going to facilitate that transfer of information. But the initial providing can happen when students first walk in the door through back-to-school and to the parents with that first teacher conference and devoting some time to just presenting what there is available at the school and through the county.
I guess then we're going to have to assume or we're going to have to provide or train our teachers to be able to share all the, gather those information and be able to understand and then be able to share with the parents and be able to even answer questions.
Well, I think as far as the, the initial introduction at the parent-teacher conference, obviously some type of training would need to be provided. But I also think it can be somewhat of an abbreviated presentation to kind of provide a menu and say, you know, this is why we have, I mean, you know, Advanced Academic Resource Teachers, here, here is who this person is, here is the purpose of this person, here's the information that they can provide you, here are the other county resources that are available. You know, so if you have advanced questions, these are the other persons and, you know, committees that you can look to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And look at the parents that are already active. Using my other hat, because I'm on the Nova District PTA, but this should be at a PTA meeting regularly. It should be at the trainings. It should be every, PTA should be having events built around Advanced Academics Night, where you just come and experience, have an example of the type of learning, the type of strategy, type of thinking, where family, hands-on. So it's not just a test. It's what does this really look like? So as she said, there's a school component, there's a parent component. Leverage the resource that you have with a lot of active parents in this county to do outreach through channels that already exist.
Thank you. Thank you. By the way, who's going off to Denver? Why? You don't have to answer. We'll miss you. Thank you.
I'm tough to work with.
Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Thank you so much for the report. I think that, I don't need to repeat, but I will echo what my colleagues have said about the quality of the report and, and in particular, the recommendations. Really insightful, all of them. And, and the text of the report itself, it struck me, you know, as I was reading through the, the focus on enhancing leadership and advocacy for advanced programs and talking about the COGAT and preparation for the Iowa test. I mean, just absolutely right on target, spot on. I, as a parent myself, before kids.
I was hoping.
For the school. Well, you know, because we are sort of, you know, parents oftentimes, you know, are, find themselves chasing, constantly chasing and trying to catch up. And, and I think for the Title I community, it's, it's probably even a greater feeling of that sensation because things are coming at them. And, and I think that this idea that engaging the Ombudsman Office with regards to Special Education Services, that's, that also is a great suggestion and I happily support that. But I, one question I had, and you, you've talked about your second, the second aspect of your charge for next year and how it was intentionally broad. And I wonder whether or not you could just talk to us about whether you thought about perhaps narrowing it? Because I think in fact, discipline does have a tremendous impact on children and, and maybe we need to understand what's happening in Title I schools and discipline in elementary and middle schools in particular.
Well, when we come up with our topics, and it's, it may be more conventional how we schedule and plan out the agenda, we kind of, I guess in August or so, we have way too many topics that we know are all going to be great. And we literally chopped half of it off from last year. And maybe one or two of them were contemplating carrying over, whereas others have come about just in discussions. So by making it broad, it allows us, when we meet in the, in the summer, to kind of hammer out what is our agenda going to be. But once we have that agenda formulated, I mean, we'll share with Ms. Keys-Gamarra and can be circulated to the school board. You'll know exactly what each of our meetings, you know, are going to be at. It's just giving time for everybody to kind of flesh it out and see, you know, who, what would this look like? Who do we have here? So.
Yeah, I certainly would, as one board member, would, would really like to understand, you know, where the disconnects are between the SR and R and violations and, and how we, how we respond to those violations and how it impacts the children themselves. Because, you know, I find that all too often, we take a rigid, you know, approach towards implementation, which, which of course has some benefits, but also, I also have this feeling that maybe we're trying to continue to use a disciplinary approach that maybe doesn't match today. And, and maybe we need to, to sort of bring it into the 21st century. So I, I understand you guys will.
You can almost guarantee that's going to show up.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much again.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you, Mike, Erin, and your whole team. Just, I think we're all blown away by the level of depth of this. Erin, I moved to Denver for a year. I miss the diversity, just warning you.
I, I will tell you that we did a lot of research into the school choice process to make sure that our children were going to have diversity at the school.
Excellent. Happy to hear it. Best of luck. I don't want to repeat what was said, just have a couple of things that popped out to me. First of all, absolutely, the, the early exposure and I think my, my colleague Pat and I here are having that conversation of, for AAP, is it helping people figure out the system or changing the system, right? I think that's the conversation that this board and school system still needs to hash out and figure out. You know, I, I do think, agree, every classroom, every child, and we need to figure out how to get there. For the, the parent outreach, I guess I'm, I'm hearing kind of two different things. One of it, which I think is fabulous, is wondering sort of what is the, the framework, making sure that in every school, whether it's through the liaison, the AART, or the, you know, PTA, or the, the principals, you know, what, what needs to happen to making, making sure parents are informed? You know, whether it's pre-K, kindergarten, first, second, third, going up. But the other is, like Mr. Moon was saying, all that information, where do you have that information? And this is one of those where, I don't know, we've talked about changing our committees. I'm just wondering if we can maybe, when we do our goal reports, be able to bring people, because you're having the conversations MSAOC, Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee's having, APAC is having, they're representing to us, I believe tomorrow, about how to get historically underrepresented groups. So maybe when we're looking at Goal One, we can bring in people from our different committees, just throwing it out there. And, and I guess the question would be, I guess for Dr. Duran and the parent handbook, do you know if this is, I believe some of this is being included, that MSAOC and the ombudsmen are working on?
Yes, much of this is being included in the handbook, which we'll have available for next school year.
Okay. So I, that's wonderful. And I repeat Karen Keys-Gamarra's call to make sure that these folks are able maybe to connect with you before that's finalized.
Absolutely.
And see if there's a perspective that they found that's missing. So there is a multilingual parent handbook that is being created. So hopefully you can give some input to that. I think that would be very helpful. And then finally, I love that you brought up the text messages. Your parent liaison is awesome at that. But I have, yeah. So I guess, you know, that's kind of one of those practices, I know that there's sometimes pushback on what we can and cannot use and whether it can be used regularly or only for emergencies. So it does seem like another thing going through and why I also wanted us to have more interpreters so that we can really figure out what our parent liaison's time is spent on, how they can help with volunteer groups coming in, like Grand Involve, or, you know, how they can make sure that families are getting information. So, so hopefully, you know, as we move forward and these different groups, looking at the important work that our support teams are doing to help our families, we can figure out through these offices, how to, how to get those best practices and share them. So I don't know if that's something that you're already doing and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Do you want to respond to that at all?
So we know that we have excellent Title I schools and lots of best practices. And one of the things that we do pretty regularly at our Title I meetings is have principals showcase the work that they do, along with their teams. And so that's something we would want to bring to T-PAC and have those showcases, opportunities with parents as well.
Do you want to say?
As long as you can manage to pay, I'll be there.
And since we're not doing Go Best My Only, I'd love to hear more about homework helpers, if we can get a sense of where this is happening and what we can do to help expand that program. I've worked at K-8 schools and it's fabulous to see, you know, the middle school students supporting their younger students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. And I will take my turn. Couple of questions and comments. Absolutely fantastic report. I really appreciate your insights and how detailed it is. With your first recommendation regarding facilitating greater communications between principals, assistant principals, and the T-PAC admin, the staff and the T-PAC, one of the things that would be helpful is if you had specific metrics. Because I find that if you have metrics, you can then hold people accountable. And then regarding your Advanced Academic Resource Teacher recommendation, I'm wondering if you have specific recommendation. if you have specific recommendations on the cultural proficiency that you would suggest? Is that different than the cultural proficiency training that we're doing elsewhere with Then regarding the, I love your recommendations on tightening up the relationship and providing additional information for the special ed population. I think that's excellent. Love your recommendations for, regarding Grand Involved and the homework helpers. One of the challenges we've had with Grand Involved is finding enough volunteers, and so if you all have some ideas on how we can really expand that in getting more volunteers, both with Grand Involved, and we see the same thing with homework helpers, and so that would be great. You mentioned the Iowa test, and this is something that I actually identified when my daughter was in elementary school, and she is now a college graduate, as the importance of having advanced academic math, or compacted math, in each one of our elementary schools. The policy got changed with the help of Mr. McElveen when I was on the APAC Committee. However, the implementation was pretty fluid in that it really only requires advanced math to be input, to be put into place for sixth grade. And that doesn't give the kids enough time to actually do well on the Iowa. So if you all have any recommendations on that, that would be great. I think it should start in, at a minimum, second grade? If not earlier, yes. And then as far as your recommendation, I would love to actually see you put in your recommendation for, charge next year to actually use the term "trauma-informed" and multiple tiers of support. And then the last piece of it is, and I don't know if it's too late to ask you to look at this, but we already know that the threshold for Title I is going to increase to 55%, which means that many of our schools that really need the Title I supports will no longer be Title I schools. And so as part of your recommended charge, I would love to have feedback from you all on how we continue to provide the supports to those schools and address many of your recommendations, even though they will technically no longer be Title I schools. So as part of that charge, a transition plan.
Terms of metrics for Recommendation One, our Title I partners will handle that. The terms of cultural proficiency, I have not looked at the technical requirements that are being trained, but I have enough experience personally. I feel like I've had to teach some teachers how to be more culturally proficient. So I would want that art to have documented experience, working with diverse populations as one. I'd want to have, I'd want to see what their recommendations are. I'd really want to know what their story and their history is, because it's not just children in Title I schools, but children of color and majority white populations are floating, wrapping their arms around a raft, and too often not encouraged to do more, to challenge themselves. So however it's implemented, if it's something that our committee could have input on, you know, what the requirements are, maybe even some interviews to get whatever it is, you know, I, I would like us to have a seat at the table for that, because what, the last thing we want to do is create, I don't want to say a problem, but we want to create, we want to provide a solution. Special ed. I think you just talked about more--
Intersex.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely, as we become more informed. And in the presentation last year, I wasn't able to be at that meeting, but something was really important that I wanted to come out of it was that our parents could leave empowered. I don't want to pamphlet. I want to know what I should expect when I sit down at a table, how it's going to go. If it doesn't go well, what's the next step? I think that's what came out of it, you know, from feedback, that's what was delivered. And we want to be able to have, again, a top area I'm not well-versed on, but use the expertise that we have to better serve those families and those students who have special education needs. The terms of Grand Involved and homework helpers, I think the, it's really the middle school is, is the feeder. Once we have that, then we, I think that will create the volunteers that schools are looking for, and it's, and it's going to be, transportation is, that's going to be one of the logistics that middle schools and elementary schools have to figure out, you know? Mobilize your PTA, mobilize your parent groups, what can you do, what can be done? The, in terms of trauma-informed, it's funny, because as we toss things around, I think one iteration of our charge did have, we're trauma-informed. So understand, while we kept it broad, we definitely had some major themes that were going to be covered, and trauma-informed and discipline are, you know. And in terms of the Title I represent, the threshold, one thing that, we've had some discussions, we were made aware of some of, you know, what's coming, all of those schools should still be members of the T-PAC. That's one recommendation we make. A lot of our, a lot of the, the resource, the information, the connections are not really budget-specific, and they definitely need to have access to everything that, you know, all the 55 and over schools are, are going to continue to have. So, you know, besides the transition support that the county's providing, we want to still have that parent network that they can lean on, because, just because a threshold changes doesn't mean their situation does.
Precisely. And so some of the federal funds are going away, and I just don't want the resources as far as the, the human resources, the volunteer resources, the people power. We need to make sure that they all support these initiatives. I'm going to allow Ms. Keys-Gamar as the liaison to the Title I Committee to have the last word now.
Well, I just wanted to mention, because I remember from a discussion with the homework helpers, that transportation was a huge issue, Dr. Bray-Bran. So I am really looking forward to some sort of discussion with respect to how we can address that, and among another, other, the other issues that we've mentioned, I just think this, I think this group is an invaluable resource to this system and to our leadership understanding how parents are feeling. And so, you know, there's already been comments about having access, and, and understand that these problems that they're mentioning with respect to how different groups are not represented in advanced academics, et cetera, it is not limited to Title I schools. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. I just cannot thank them enough. So I, can we just give them a hand, please?
Thank you all so much. You've done yeoman's work and it is greatly appreciated, and we look forward to seeing you all continue the work next year. And with that, we'll take a couple of moments to bring up the SHAC Committee.
So ladies and gentlemen, if I can ask board members to return to the table. One, two, three. I hate to do this, Ms. Palchuk, but I'm going to call you to the table.
Thank you so much to the School Health Advisory Committee for being so patient in our being a bit late tonight. As you can tell, we are all enthusiastically digging into each of these reports. And so with that, I will turn over the agenda to the SHAC. And I actually am--
Here, I'm going to try and be brief. I won't go for more than two or three hours.
[laughing]
And I'll apologize in advance, because my IT department had his fourth-grade Virginia Studies SOL today, so there is no PowerPoint tonight, we're just going to sort of talk. You like it? All right, so I, I do want to be brief. I'd rather have more time for Q and A than, than my palaver. But you guys have the report in front of you, and rather than start at the start, I want to jump to the middle and go straight to the overall performance metrics section, because I have some, I think, exciting news to report, although it's, the newness of it is, is not terribly, but it is still, still exciting to the committee. This self-reporting that we've done with the metrics and the responses to these survey questions indicates that FCPS is doing a very good job across a wide number of areas. We're seeing very strong scores in our implementation of all sorts of policies, such as recess no longer being withheld as a disciplinary measure, or to catch up on the homework, or whatever. We see schools addressing the topics of depression, adverse mental health, impacts, these things. There's always room for improvement, but we are seeing data that's showing that we're doing a pretty good job of addressing these things. The coolest part of all this is that now we can access this information from two different pathways. We have the youth survey, which provides the results of what the students are seeing on the ground, and we also have the metrics themselves, which is essentially self-reporting by the grownups. And so what you can do when you have both of those sort of competing but collaborative sources of information is you can compare one against the other. If the metrics from the wellness committees indicate that we have, say, a 4.58 out of five in depression being addressed successfully in the curriculum, and yet you have a sort of disparate result in the self-reporting of students in the youth survey, then there's a disconnect there. And so by virtue of having these two avenues of, of data, we can access those sort of disconnects and address them. We can dial down on, on where the problems are and figure out ways to improve them. So it is early, we have good results from the, the metrics, the wellness reporting. Most of the categories, we're seeing very strong results. One of the weakest categories that we see thus far is the publicity of the committees themselves. So, you know, the schools are, I think we have 100% participation, I guess that's the rule, so they're doing it. But what we don't have is awareness among the community that these things exist. And so if you look at Recommendation Number Five on my list of Exhibit A, the proposal's sort of towards the end, I think that we need to do a better job of getting this information in the hands of parents. And I'm not one for chopping down a bunch of trees to make paper flyers, but if you do it for a year or two to sort of jumpstart the awareness of this issue, put it in the back-to-school night package that everybody gets, everybody reads, most, most everyone reads that stuff, that's your, I think, biggest bang-for-the-buck opportunity to get this in the hands of parents. And the benefit of these committees in the first place is transparency, right? So we have, you know, we have the students reporting and your internal sys, the youth survey system, and now we have the ability technically for parents to participate in the wellness committees along with the administrators, but if they're not aware, they can't do it. Their awareness is what drives the improvements that we'll see in health and wellness in the first place. Transparency is a wonderful thing, everybody gets that. So let's, let's maybe think about ways to get that message broadcast more effectively. And I think this is one way to do it. You guys might have other ideas. We have email blast, Dr. Bray-Bran has an email blast kind of thing. I think maybe old-fashioned paper flyer for a couple of years to get this up and running. Yes?
Yeah, because the, I mean, it was actually, our number one goal was to have, for the first, you know, sort of kickoff year, to get these wellness committees up and running, and including community members, parents, students, at least at the high school level, because we were thinking that would help generate-- Because we were thinking that would help generate wellness activities. And those would be not all the same at every school. It would depend on the composition of those committees. So we were a little disappointed to see the, that the wellness committees are often, you know, three staff members that are, you know, either assigned or volunteering for those duties. And I think the best example was McLean High School, actually. Their PTA has a wellness committee. And Betty, who's on our committee, just spoke to the chair of the McLean PTA Wellness Committee, who had no idea that FCPS now was supposed to have a wellness committee in every school. So they have actually sort of two separate, they've got their FCPS staff group that's wellness committee, and then the PTA doing their thing and not even knowing about each other. So...
So that's sort of just by virtue of, I think, the newness of this idea. It will take care of itself over time, but if transparency is the goal and is ultimately the benefit of this, I think we need to work a little bit harder to get that messaging out. That's the happy bit. The growly bit is in the actual answer choices to the metrics that Shaq devised in the first place. So a couple of years ago now, I guess, we put together the reporting questions that we thought were important, and we put together sort of a response scheme, which had sort of technical terms like meets or exceeds or, you know, not applicable, yes, no, words that mean stuff. After we developed that document, ORSE, which is, I think, is the Office of Research and curious acronyms, changed the answer choices to things like emerging or what are the other ones?
There's transitioning, exploring.
Exploring.
Emerging.
So, right, what is the difference between emerging and exploring? Does any, I have no idea. And so they're sort of, they're, obviously someone's put thought into how these things, it's okay, I don't mind, into how these things sort of work together. And there are point values ascribed to each term. But when a parent looks at these answers, it means nothing. And so I really think that there are two issues there. One, we could use better words. I liked our words better. But two, after Shaq submitted our ideas on how this sort of survey should be reported, it got changed, and it never came back to Shaq. So that, I think, is problematic. If we're the appointed representatives of the community, but things change without us having a say, that's not good. So we made a recommendation, which is number seven, on the recommendation list, essentially change the things back.
Especially, we felt it was especially important to have not applicable because they got rid of that one. And so then when you read the principal's comments, a lot of times they were literally commenting, "We couldn't really answer this one."
Right. You needed not applicable.
We had thought of that because if it's about recess and you're a high school principal, it isn't, it's not applicable.
Right. It's actually number six, not number seven. Speaking of recess, you guys did a fantastic job in recent years in increasing the amount of recess that kids are getting. However, there is still room for improvement. So thank you, great work, let's keep it going. For instance, in elementary school, if you're a first grader and you have two 15-minute chunks of recess, by the time you get 36-year-olds out to the basketball court, you've used up your seven minutes. And by the time you get them back in, recess is gone. And there hasn't, the value of recess is not just the physical activity. It's also the unstructured time so kids can go explore their ideas and their friendships and their social everything. So if recess time is being used up in just the transition, that's not an effective use of time. So perhaps we could combine those things. Perhaps we can come up with a way to increase recess time. I know it's hard to fit more minutes in the day and magically conjure them. Did you, you have a thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, all right. Good, good. So, yes, I mean, it's a point, I think we're all in violent agreement on this. Recession is good for kids. And so when it's used up, that's not ideal. Let's come up with a way to improve that situation if we can. On that same point, we had a consistent theme of, I guess, communication from the community from those three middle schools, which have sixth graders attending the middle school, but the sixth graders don't get recess because there aren't recess facilities at the middle school. This is a problem we need to address for those kids because they're technically elementary school students. I don't know legally, I am a lawyer, but I'm not purporting to be one tonight. Legally, they're still elementary kids. There's a Virginia requirement that ensures that they have recess time, they have access to this resource. But for instance, in middle school, you do have the four minutes between classes. That's not unstructured time. That doesn't count because, yes, you're walking, moving your body, but you're not getting a brain break. There is physical education class at middle school, obviously. And that's, you know, the timing of it is adequate in some ways, but it's also not unstructured. So we're missing, especially for those, they're still elementary kids, and I think this is important. And we're seeing a lot of sort of input from the community in those schools that this is an issue. So I think we need to do more to address that problem. Let's talk about briefly AP and IB courses. And I want to be very careful because the committee did not spend a whole lot of time on this issue this year because we did last year, and we sort of produced ideas for you guys. And I understand that there's a meeting that's taking place in September where this gets discussed. We simply would like for you to refer to last year's report, which I attached as Exhibit something. I think it's Exhibit B on this, which basically says, "Let's think about a cap on AP and IB classes in order to address the issue of student stress." That issue isn't going away. Everyone, I think, would agree that a larger sort of societal conversation is in order on this issue because we don't need to punish our kids to push, push, push always to get into Harvard. It's just not necessary. It's not even good. However, waiting for a societal change is going to take longer than even I can talk in one sitting. So we need to, we need to, I think, jumpstart this. If FCPS isn't going to be the one to push this issue and come up with a solution, who is? Like, who in the country has the size, the resources, the expertise that FCPS has? You guys in this room are the ones who can make this change. We suggested a 2-2-3-3 cap. So two in ninth grade, two 10th grade, three in three. That's still 10 AP classes. It would still cover probably 90-something percent of the students. But what it does is it sets a tone that the grownups are aware that stress is an issue for kids. We're aware of the connections between stress and all sorts of awful results that we don't like to talk about. So let us jumpstart that conversation in the community by addressing it meaningfully. When you guys talk about that in September, I can't wait to hear what the results are. There are all sorts of ideas on how to address this issue. We can look harder at homework caps, but that's very difficult to do because kids need different amounts of time to do their calculus problems. Time is a big factor for our high school students. And we spoke to a lot of them this year, and I commended a few of them in the report, a couple of the groups from Madison High School. We had a lot of really high flyers come in and talk to us about their levels of stress and the just paltry amounts of sleep that they're getting. Two, three hours a night consistently for 17- and 18-year-olds is, it's just not enough.
And they all drove to the meeting.
They all drove to the meeting. So that's not even safe. And I think there was almost unanimity among the students that came to talk that they felt if someone limited the number of AP and IP, IB classes they could take, that would reduce their stress because they're no longer allowed to push themselves to take these ridiculous schedules, which then sets a tone for all the other kids in the schools, too. So it's a way to impact a small number of students, which then sets off a wave that impacts a lot more students. It impacts a larger community conversation. It's an idea. So if it's the idea, great. If not, great, but we really need for you guys to help us on this issue. It's one of the most important things impacting health and wellness for our students. The issue of drowsy driving. Phyllis, do you want to talk about that? That's sort of your...
Well, with the Youth Risk Survey, we would really like to see a question added about drowsy driving. We want to see a question added about drowsy driving to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And so we sent a letter making that request.
So drowsy driving is exactly what it sounds like, but it's relevant to the schools because if homework load, if sports practices, if other time commitments impact the level of sleep that students are getting, then FCPS is essentially driving to some degree this issue. And so it would seem to me to be the appropriate thing to do to gather information on how many kids are willing to self-report as driving drowsily. This is, you know, it's how we make a sort of societal impact on an issue that we have some control over. I think it just makes sense to ask the question. And I think that that has already been forwarded to the appropriate FCPS people. They're now considering it.
And county people.
County people. If you guys wanted to put your foot on the gas pedal a little bit, I think that would be okay. Effects of screen time in school. And this is, I think I flagged it a little bit last year, but I'm going to flag it a little more deeply this year. We had a number of speakers and commentators and public interest in general on the issue of the amount of screen that's happening in school. So it can be, you know, adaptive learning software. It can be Facebook. It can be phones in classrooms, on buses, wherever. So I'm a dad. I've got far too many kids. If any of you want one, I can loan them out. I try and set limits on screen time. One of my kids, for instance, has severe anxiety. Screen time's a bad thing. Even for the kids who don't have issues with screen time in and of itself, I, as a parent, would like to be able to set some limit or exert some amount of control over how much exposure to screen my kids are having in a day. If they are using it in school, even in an educational setting, that undermines my abilities as a parent. And I think I'm far from alone in feeling a little bit funny about that. In addition, we are finding all kinds of evidence building slowly on the web. That is, and not just, you know, the internet is telling us this thing, but actual sort of... I'm losing my word.
Peer-reviewed research.
Peer-reviewed research. There, thank you, Tom. That is showing that there are, there are connections, correlations at least, between adverse, well, I guess, inferior educational outcomes and increased use of screen, even if that screen is educational in nature. Nothing, I think, is ever going to be teacher-student interaction, a personal touch. That's how people have been learning for zillions of years. You guys, I'm sure, know in your own experience that if you write something down, it fires the neurons in your head in a different way that helps you retain information in a superior manner to typing it. If you take an information in a book, a textbook, you will retain it, and studies will show this. You will retain it differently and better than you will if you take it in off of a screen. So parents, I think, are concerned about the, I mean, it's, they're concerned about the usage of this. Even in an educational setting, it's wonderfully efficient. It's great to have an iPad teach math and differentiate all the kids in the class. There are all sorts of advantages to differentiating students. However, there's a cost associated with that. And so the level of concern, I think, not just in FCPS, but nationally, is slowly on the increase on this issue. It's a real issue, and I think that it would be helpful, and I'm sure you'll hear about it more if you guys will begin to consider this, in whether we need to set guidelines on the use of screen in school. I've covered just about all of it. Diversity in the composition of Shaq. I heard the D-word a number of times in the previous presentation. It's a wonderful resource that we have access to in the county. It's been suggested to me that if the membership of Shaq begins to take on the appearance more accurately of the community, then our relevance, our significance will increase at the same time. It just seems to make sense. And so you guys are the ones who appoint Shaq members. All I would ask for you to do at this time is simply keep that in mind. Diversity is, I think, a benefit to this committee even more than others. We've addressed our charge for the next year. You guys can see those topics there. Phyllis is going to be our chair next year, so thanks, Phyllis. This is sort of her homework assignment.
It was a temporary, it was a moment of insanity when everyone else was silent.
And so I would like to thank all those members of Shaq who helped so much during the year. We'd like to thank Sandy for her support. She's not here. Thank Joe Thompson for his input, especially on a lot of the challenging issues. He had really sound thoughts on AP and IB. There was not unanimity in our discussions, but it was, once again, a very productive and open year for discussion in the committee. So thank you, guys. Thank you, Leah. And I guess we'll, Teresa, will take questions.
Thank you very much. We do have a few questions this evening. I'll start with Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Great. Well, first of all, I really appreciate the structure of your report. We're at the end Exhibit A. You just listed them all there. And you'll be happy to know that pretty much all of them, I just went check, yep, 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 yep. So number six on the fact that ORSE changed your language. And as a fellow recent parent, I will agree. I don't think the language was clear. I gave an exclamation amen. So to my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand, I hope that gets fixed and does not happen again. At minimum, as the committee was asking if ORSE is going to do that, they need to show respect to the advisory committee and send the draft language back saying they would recommend these changes. But it's not okay to ask our advisors to work this hard on something and then have it changed on them. I don't think that reflects well on the division doing something like that. I will also say that I would like to know where the board can access the wellness metric, metrics results.
Do you want to pull that up?
So...
If you... Can you hear me now? If you go to FCPS.edu and in the search you just put wellness reporting, you'll see each school's individual report, and then there's an executive summary there. It's also linked to the School Health Advisory Committee webpage.
Okay. And that ties in beautifully also, David, what you were saying is the school board members, the school division, we need to do some really intentional work around raising awareness for our community about these wellness committees because they're great with intention, but we need to make sure they understand. The driving while drowsy, anyone who does an internet search, and you will see that being, being drowsy for sleep, lack of sleep, adequate sleep, is the same as being intoxicated. And in fact, they showed even just one night of sleeplessness can raise your, or reduce your functionality as if you had a blood alcohol level of .1, which is over the drunk legal limit. So we do need to continue to be more intentional with our sleep language. And then, David, I appreciate you talking about the AP and IB. I would like to see Shaq maybe help us get some more information about school divisions that have taken this. I know the state of North Carolina did it at the college admissions level, saying that all public universities in their metric for admissions would not reward beyond five AP or IB courses. The suggestions you have on the 2-2-3-3, I think that still actually could be too much for ninth and 10th graders. I know you guys are just trying to get us to start thinking about it. And I'll just finally close out by just saying that I still think our biggest problem is we are over-testing. We are over-assessing with massive amounts of homework levels. It creates problems for teacher workload, creates problems for kids. And that's where the intentional work needs to be done.
Thank you very much. I just, I don't know if I'm supposed to, but I'm going to comment anyway because I'm big. So I think it's a market-based system, essentially, the college admissions process. And so I think there are some sort of arbitrary rules out there. We're not going to count any more than five. And that's great. That's somebody did something that's wonderful. I think, sort of more broadly speaking, across the United States as a market, students are not punished if they haven't met X number of AP classes in their, under their belt. their belt. They are required to essentially take something close to the maximum amount that is authorized by their school system. So, if the school system is in rural Kentucky and they offer two, if you take two, then you're golden. If you're in FCPS, you better be taking 12, better be taking 10. It's, so it's up to you guys. It will, it does not impact the student's competitiveness, from the research that Shack has reviewed, to reduce, to set a cap, or simply reduce the number of courses these kids take. They just have to do what is offered. You have to take as rigorous a curriculum as your district will provide.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
First of all, thank you for this report, and I'll just continue with that. I remember discussing that last year, I believe, and we got a lot of pushback from parents. So, I think a big part of this is getting our community to understand that this is a part of an unhealthy pattern, and, you know, that, I, I think that is the rub, and, and it may be, in fact, that those parents are influencing what kids sign up for. It's kind of a vicious cycle, and so I'd love to collaborate on how best to, to get that across. But I will tell you, the biggest defenders of not putting in a cutoff was parents. So, with respect to screen time, completely agree. I, I know that there are different learners, some people, they, they have a different response if they're holding a book as opposed to screen time. So I would love for us to have some mechanism by which we look at what's the best practice, because I do think that we need balance with respect to, to screen time. We can't ignore technology, obviously, but we certainly cannot, I don't think that we should be without textbooks at all. And so what is the balance? And I'm hoping, Dr. Brabrand, that we can explore how best to do that, because I, I think 100% no more books is probably not the best way to go. I, I have to say that I, I had two things that I, I was hoping to hear more about. One of them is the homework policy. We've heard from our students that, you know, how much we, how we implement our homework in our schools is adding to stress, and so I, I'd like to hear more from your committee, and perhaps even, I don't know if that can be joined with surveys, but we've got to find a way to, to do that. As long as I've been on the board, we've been talking about it. I haven't seen anything really happening in how to address it. And just my last comment, because they're, they're timing me, is I also wanted to hear more about jeweling and vaping. It, it appears to be a real, it's a real crisis in our schools, and kids are not aware of what they're doing. I am convinced. And it can lead to all sorts of addictions, and they don't know what they're, what they're ingesting, and so really need to, to get some, a greater grip on that.
So, thank you for those comments, good insights. I'd like to address them all really briefly. On the AP/IB cap, there are any number of reasons to not do it. Joe made very eloquent arguments for the last two years over why he feels that setting a cap on AP and IB classes would essentially limit student access to various subjects. You'd narrow the range of AP courses that were available, and that's a negative impact. You want to have all the options available for everybody. Good point, there's a counterpoint in that if you have all these options available in the first place, it simply encourages a drive to take everything. And so you have to balance those. You guys are the ones who are, who need to make these decisions. Shack can recommend it. Last year, we recommended a cap. This year, we agreed to recommend last year's recommendation, if that makes any sense. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of committee time on it, because you guys haven't had a chance to act fully. So, there are considerations. Also, a lot of parents don't like it, but if you think about it, if you set a cap at 10 courses, you would be capping a very small percentage of schools. So it's, it's partly a parent education issue.
We did have data about how many students took more than 10, so we can send you that charge.
It's a small number of students, but it sets a large tone. So, these are, they're useful conversations that you guys are in the position to have. On textbooks, that was one of the things we discussed as a committee this year, and that might be one way to get at this issue of overwhelming kids with screen time. Why can't we just have paper textbooks available to those students who request them? There are some still. I was able to request some for my kids this year, but very few people know that, and even fewer probably do it. There's a limited quantity of these books available. If we maintain that resource, research will indicate we learn better from books in paper than we do from screens. It only makes sense. On homework policy, it doesn't matter what the policy is, because nobody abides by it. Just like, it doesn't matter what the sports practice policy is, because people don't abide by it. We've heard evidence from students for years now saying there is a cap in how many hours volleyball practice or cheerleading or whatever can go. Those limits are frequently ignored. If it's not an official requirement, then it's only a requirement if you really want to play. You better stay till the end of practice. It's that sort of issue. It's sort of informal tacit understandings that you need to put in more time than you're allowed to put in. Homework, my middle schoolers are putting in more time on homework than the high school students are allowed to put in. Their, the policies don't work, simply because there are times in the year when tests stack up or projects stack up. At the end of the school year, everything's stacking up, end of reporting periods. Also, the issue that I think Pat discussed last year, in that simply, some kids take more time for assignments than other kids. So if you set a cap that affects kid one, but he's slower than kid two at the same thing, you've impacted kids differently, it's very difficult to come up with a solution. That's why I thought ABIB, APIB is one way to address this, that sort of matches everyone's pace. It's, it's, that's one of the considerations, please.
So, we had Carlyn Floyd on Shack a couple of years ago, who, I think if you guys could bring her in to talk, she had some great things that she was implementing at Woodson. I don't know how they're going now, but a couple of years ago, it sounded like a, a great approach. She was having the kids report, so they're both taking the same class, but different sections with different teachers. How much homework do you have? You'd expect it to be the same. It wasn't the same. So then...
And the kids know that.
Right. So the kids, right. Well, they don't always have a choice, right? It's assigned. So, then Carlyn was getting the teachers together to talk to one another. Your kids are reporting, you only have one hour of homework. Your kids are reporting, they have two. It's the same class, what are you doing differently? And having the teacher have that professional conversation and learning opportunity, I don't know how it's turned out, but it sounded like a great approach.
And, and briefly on jeweling and vaping, we had a public comment at, I think, our penultimate meeting, where a parent brought up this issue, because apparently they do have different propensities for addiction. There are all sorts of reasons why these things are much worse than people realize. It's an issue in school, and her point, and it was a good point, and I probably should have written it, I just didn't think of it, because I wrote this late at night, there is no resource that she could think of. Her, her son had been suspended or punished from the school, because he got caught with the jeweling equipment. There was no resource for him, who had already been addicted, partly because of stress, partly environmental whatevers. Who's he going to go talk to about that? He's already addicted to this. If you bring it into the school, if you talk about it with people, you're going to get yourself in trouble. This happened to him, he got suspended. So, we need, we need some sort of intervention mechanism, you know, not just like a zero tolerance, you're gone, kind of policy. We need to help these kids, first and foremost, it's a wellness issue.
I would remind that Ms. Keys-Gamar had a amendment last year on addictive substances. So, Ms. Palchuk, please.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate, you, you always have such a wide breadth of topics that you cover, and I, I guess I have a couple of questions about those, and then looking at the charge for next year. So the first one would be around the middle school. I know Ms. Evans and I and a few others have met with some of the parents who were asking for some kind of a break and et cetera. And, and I guess I'm excited to see, I believe it's one of the recommended charges for next year, or it's not. Yes, number, no, start time, so not this. So I guess my question is, you have a lot of really interesting things, the wellness committees and the middle school start times. I guess it's more of a question, rather than taking on so many new topics, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, I think it would benefit us, if you're willing to, to help us go a little more deeply into what can we do with the, the middle school break request? What is the role of the wellness committees? Because I'm wondering, I think that's a great recommendation for better exposure, but as I'm trying to figure out how I send that out, I'm still unclear as to what I'm asking or what I'm sharing, or how we get, you know, the way Carlyn worked with principals, what we can do to help facilitate some of that ownership within those committees, so.
So, one of the things we really wanted to do with, when wellness committees were up and running, was to feature some of the activities and things that they've done. And so, it was interesting talking in committee. Joe actually was telling us about a lot of the things that are done in the buildings. People don't even realize that they're part of the wellness goals. And so, our schools are really doing a lot of great things, and so we'd like to feature them through the wellness committees. And, one of the, you know, as we were building the wellness policy, and on Shack and in the community, right, you have different people who are passionate about different things, right? So if it's my school, I'm doing sleep education, right? But we've got other advocates who are doing, let's bike to school day, or, you know, safe routes to school, walking. And we didn't want to sort of squash or limit the different possibilities and say, every school must be doing this activity this year, because it just doesn't make sense in our school system. So, instead, what we'd like to do is, when a, like Minds Matter that Madison has, right, featuring that, so that other high schools, who, some of them already have it, but some of them don't. But they might say, oh wow, look at what they're doing, that's so cool, we could do that too. I mean, that's sort of, that's the end goal of building these committees up and having volunteers help, so the principal doesn't have to do it all, so the staff doesn't have to do it all. I mean, we have an incredibly passionate, involved community, and why not sort of tap into those resources? And we know they're different in every building.
Well, and that's, that's sort of the whole thing. I mean, if you'll forgive the political implication, it's a market-based system. If you increase access to this marketplace of ideas, if you get this, if you inform the community that they're allowed to participate, get involved, contribute to these committees, then you have a much bigger set of ideas that come into you guys to distill than you'll get from Shack. We heard a lot of sort of ideas from the community. Students are forming clubs to address mental health and overall wellness and stress. That's fantastic.
Green schools, green cleaning products. There are schools that are, you know, devoted to, you know, putting in energy-saving devices, and kids are doing it, you know? And this is an opportunity to feature those stories. You know, you could put that in your newsletter, feature one of the stories, Mantua kids are doing this.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate, and I guess that's a little bit of where we're getting at. A lot of, from my, from, from what I've seen, a lot of what those, we have, you know, the garden club at Mantua and the other, you know, Dr. Brabrand and I went and did some yoga together with the classroom. And because every school is different, but we've now kind of imposed a wellness committee in each school, I guess my question is sort of the, beyond asking us to do more outreach, and, and maybe that's the first step, what's the next step, right? So, how do we help support, figure out what's happening at different schools, share those practices? I guess, what do you see as the next kind of evolution of, they've started, we advertise them, I guess, a recommendation of where to go with them?
I don't want to sound obtuse at all, but I think, I think it's, it all builds on itself. So if you have this community awareness that these things exist, more ideas come in, more follow-through from parents comes in, that provides more political pressure, if you will. There are a lot of, not a lot, there are a number of principals in FCPS, just like everywhere else in the world, who are very entrenched, and they are, they are more or less accepting of community involvement and ideas than others. If you have a principal who's entrenched and who's doing the survey all by himself or herself, you're going to get a very different result as to whether things are embedded or emerging, or other words that sound the same, than if you had the PTA involved, or if you had students involved. That's something we'd like to see, especially in middle and high school, get students involved. You get students involved in these issues, then suddenly you really do have political pressure that sheds a lot of sunlight on these issues. And then the ideas come, and the clubs pop up. And then in your email sort of briefings to your constituents, you can say, hey, look at what this school is doing. All these ideas come up. We need a way to get these ideas, I guess, gathered in the first place and then distributed. They'll become gathered once more people are aware of them, and then we, as a committee, whoever is the recipient of all these ideas, can then give it to you guys to distribute.
I don't want to, then try to, I appreciate that. And I guess my question for you would be, I don't know, I can't pinpoint one wellness committee that's really, like, gone, gone above and beyond any others. So I don't know if, if you've had some examples of ones that you're like, please highlight these, you know?
Okay. Well, I think what we've learned from the survey is that there are very few actually growing, right? So we want to, we, Shack thought, basically, the first step in really getting this policy out and to grow was to build these committees. So, step one is literally inviting participation. And we know that it'll be hard or impossible at some schools, but step one is just getting it off the ground.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And I think we could share, you know, some ideas, like Minds Matter. We had Calm come and talk to us. That was amazing. I'd love to see that mindfulness program grow.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I ask a couple of questions regarding a capping AP/IB test? Probably 10 altogether, 10 sounds pretty reasonable number. And I'm sure that there are students there who want to do more than 10, and, you know, vast majority do less than 10. The question that, one of the questions that I have is the distribution of those 10. You know, freshmen capping at 2 versus junior capping at 3, there's a huge difference between expectation from everybody on the, basically what juniors can, juniors are expected to do versus what freshmen. So 2 and 3, then, I think the distribution, I, I may disagree, doing it their way. I don't see that many freshmen doing 2 APs, even, even for the sophomore, 2 is quite a lot. But for many of the juniors, 3, a lot of them do more than 3. And, and so, might want to take a look at that. Another question about, you know, capping, we as, you know, you know, light house school district, benchmarking school district, maybe take a lead in this area. That's, that's a great, noble thought. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, argue with making that advocacy from, from your committee. However, the reasons why that many parents may oppose capping it is thinking that that's limiting their children's potential of getting into certain colleges. I think that's what's driving behind so many APs and IP tests, you know, IP courses students are taking. You know, what if, what if doing, doing a, some sort of more global approach, expanded approach, regional basis, not just a Fairfax, because our students may compete with the students from Loudon and Prince William and Arlington-Alexandria, we should be all together in this. So, you know, parents may say that if you just cap our Fairfax County students, our students were far behind all the students, unless college admissions office come out and say, we're going to limit it to 6, 5, 4, we're not going to look at anything above that. So maybe that's, might be an approach that we should take. And I had one more question about AP versus post-AP. You seem to have a, committee seems to have less concern about post-AP. Is that because post-AP is sound there is, has a less workload for the post-AP courses?
Yes, it essentially...
Okay, let me, let me finish with this. Is that mainly because post-APs do not come with the AP exams? Whether AP courses come with the AP exams, where you have a lot of pressure to perform well on those exams, and those pressures go to not only just the students, but also teachers, that may drive on, you know, and, and requiring more work by teachers and students, and students putting pressure upon themselves as well?
So it's a, it's a complex analysis, and you've touched on some issues that we dive into as a committee, but we don't, they don't really make it in the six-page summary. The post-AP classes is the same issue as the 2 AP cap for ninth graders. There are very few students who access these resources. Not too many ninth graders do it, but there are some. And so for those who are super duper duper smart and need access to APs in ninth grade, or those who complete the AP curriculum by the time they're done with 12th grade, and they go on to essentially upper-level college courses before they even leave high school, we did not want to, because there's so few, because the workload is different, there are no AP exams, as you, as you identified, in those courses. There was less of a reason to cap those. This is how this issue begins to get complex. So it's not just, it's, nothing is ever perfectly simple. But we felt that by allowing, you could also do a, a sort of holistic approach and say, you can take 10 through high school, do them however you want. It's another way to do it, or pick your numbers. It doesn't really matter what the number is. You guys can choose that. We just want to get at the issue itself and put in some sort of safety net for schools. You mentioned that you're concerned, you're hearing concern from parents, or you would imagine parents are concerned that if Fairfax County imposes a cap, but Loudon County does not, what happens? Are our students suddenly less competitive than Loudon? That would be a bad result. The evidence we've seen, the information we've seen says, no, it doesn't impact anyone, because college admissions officers all know Fairfax County. It's, everyone knows Fairfax County. At, at all the schools, anyone's concerned about. And so, if there's a cap, that will And so, if there's a cap, that will be taken into account. You also get into a group action problem. If you start worrying about what Loudon's gonna, I think of, I'm a political sort of person, but if you think about, you know, the climate change issue, if the United States imposes a cap, but India doesn't, what happens? If you have agreement among a number of countries or agreement among a number of counties, but then somebody changes their mind, then you've broken the entire system. Somebody has to go first. And I really feel like Fairfax County is, has resources that so few school systems have. I think if anyone is gonna begin to change this conversation, it needs to be us. I can't think of another school system in a better position to do it than, than ours.
I'm out of time.
And with that, I do have a go-back by Ms. McLaughlin, but I have just a couple of comments before I allow her go-back. And it is on your recommendations. Essentially, I wanna talk a little bit about the wellness committees at the various schools and whether you think it would be appropriate to have a link to the wellness committee on the website for each of our individual schools, so that it becomes more present and more visible. And then secondly, the role of the wellness committees in addressing mental well-being, anxiety, and, you know, just some of the concerns that you raise when you look at your recommended, recommended charge for next year. And so if you see some sort of intersection between the local wellness committee and the work that you would like to do.
I do, and I see you messing with that clock. I wonder about your screen time exposure. I'm a little worried about you. As far as the wellness committee is being linked on the school websites, that's a fantastic idea. We should have thought of that. Thank you. Let's, let's do that. We'll talk about it next year. If you guys wanna do it sooner, that's great. On the issues of mental well-being, anxiety, and et cetera, those hugely important topics that drive so much of why all of us are here in the first place, those are reflected in the metrics. And so if you have better community engagement, student engagement, parent engagement, PTA, the whole deal, you will only improve the accuracy and completeness of the information we have on those. As I, as I tried to start off with, I don't know if I did it effectively, having the youth survey in one hand and having the wellness committee reporting in the other hand lets you really look and see where we're effective and where we're not, because we wanna look at this honestly, because we wanna prioritize the health and wellness of students and families and employees. So, it is addressed, and I think that the data will continue to improve. If you look at, for instance, on this topic that you raised, whether we successfully address depression, suicide, et cetera, in our schools, in the curriculum, the, the metric reporting says we do a very good job. It's 4.58 out of 5, so that's emerging or something. However, if you look at the youth survey, 30% of our students have felt depression, 28 or so, I forget the exact number, a high number, an alarming number, have had thoughts of suicide during their high school career. A lot of those will tie those things to student stress, which can be homework, can be caps, can be extensive sports practice, all sorts of things. Now Fairfax County is not hugely outlining the other counties in the country. There are a lot of students all across the country who are feeling stressed, pressured to get into college. You know, the job markets are shrinking, automation is happening, all these things contribute. And so we're not doing a terrible job. We're actually doing a pretty good job. But my whole thinking is that this county is in a better position than most to do better. And so this is why I think more inclusion, more publicity, more participation in these wellness committees will allow us to tailor our curriculum and resources more effectively.
Thank you. I agree with you. Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I had a question, and this may sound like it's coming out of left field and I maybe should know the answer to this, but when we look at the youth survey data and we look at stress and all the things that we worry about, do we, are we able to go deeper and connect that to home situations? And I ask because, okay, I would say, yeah, I ask because I know we, those of us who are at a certain place in life, you know, we assume that our kids are stressed because they, they're too ambitious and they have too many courses that they take and they're not sleeping enough. But we know that in an increasingly poverty-stricken community, with people from all over the world, from all kinds of different circumstances that can bring a lot of stress with them, some of this has to be home circumstance as well. And I'm just wondering...
Some of it is, and you could, you could probably, did I interrupt you? Do you wanna finish? You could probably tease it all out. If you look at whoever came up with the interactive tool for the youth survey data, those people were fabulous. It allows you to compare variables against other variables in a way that you can change them. If you guys haven't played with that, do it.
If you haven't played with it, it is amazing.
So you can tease out correlations between, you can find homework, you can find home situations, you can find other, you know, financial stress, hunger. But, one of the things that we keep coming back to is in that same youth survey, there's a list of protective factors that impact students. And it's, you know, it's a number of things. It's access to, to parents, it's access to community resources, the whole deal that makes sense. I think if you had the time and resources, or if you guys were to direct someone to look into this, you could tease out the correlations between those data points and you could sort of suss out what might be driving what. It's gonna be very difficult to come to conclusive proof that will satisfy everyone, though. I can't convince everyone in the world that cigarettes are bad for you. There are always people who are gonna disagree and say correlation, not causation, and the whole thing. But that, that tool is there, it's very useful. You guys really should take some time. And if you guys could do that to the wellness metrics over the next, it's new, so it takes time. But if we had that ability to sort of compare variables in the same way that we can on the youth survey, that would only increase our, our toolset.
Well, thank you. And as we start to talk more about trauma-influenced intervention, you know, interventions for trauma-influenced issues, I, I think that that kind of data could probably help.
And I think that, I mean, we had one committee member who was very interested in trauma, and Jenna White called me early in the year and was talking about coming to present to us. And I think she presented maybe to you guys, and I said, look, you can go direct. But I was listening to the Title I group, and I was thinking, we have a lot of things in common that we care about, and it might be good to have one joint meeting or something to talk and compare notes. And I do think we have a lot of trauma that kids are dealing with in our schools that's just ever-present. And so...
I don't think trauma is in the, in the youth survey, though. Is that there?
I don't think trauma is in the youth survey.
That might be worth, worth adding. That's a good point.
I don't think that. I mean, there's hunger. But, so.
Right.
Components.
Yeah, it's just kind of that, there are so many ways that I think kids feel insecure right now in the world, right? And there's a lot of factors for that. I'm not sure we can take them all into account.
And I think that Groveton program, just giving them tools to build resilience is helpful across the board, right? So it was great to hear what they were doing there and the impact that it was having. And that's the kind of thing, I was thinking, okay, if we could feature that, which I actually have seen it featured, I think, but, you know, you gotta repeat everything multiple times for people to see it.
So Ms. McLaughlin.
I know it's late, so I just wanna make a quick follow-up because of some of the comments they've made this evening, and we had some of this conversation a year ago as well. There are not a lot of things that I'm gonna profess to have a lot of expertise in, but one of them is college admissions. I spent six years doing it at Georgetown, spent a year doing it at Duke. I've seen how the decisions get made. And the landscape can always change, but I just put three kids through the rigors of selective college admissions and saw how it went for them all over again. Our Naviance data also is a rich resource of looking at how kids fare in the college admissions process for Fairfax County. There's a lot of myths out there. You don't have to take more than seven or eight A Ps and you can get into multiple IVs. I know that firsthand from my own children. That said, there is a mentality out there for the arms race. And there is this idea that, again, what is it going to take? Maybe we're long overdue for another college admissions roundtable, which I know we did in this county back in 2008, and it was wonderful. It really allowed us to have admissions officers come and talk to these things. In the end, I don't necessarily think we're, well, I know for sure we're not solving it tonight. I think that there are very good questions being raised, concerns being raised about how our community will handle it. But I do know one thing about this board. When we focus on the data and the research to drive our conversation, both to dialogue with each other and then with our community, the community will have a deeper confidence in whatever it is we decide to do. And so, that's one of the things that I just kinda wanna leave everybody with. Well-intentioned conversation, but really unless you've sat inside and seen how the decisions get made, we, we don't want to necessarily put policies in place that are addressing the wrong thing. I do hear you, David, and very much agree, there is something for sure that Fairfax County can do. And one of those options very well could be saying, do you need to take more than eight A Ps over the course of your high school career? And you are correct, that Fairfax County could decide that limit in communication with our community, and the colleges would not penalize our kids, regardless of what Arlington and Montgomery County and Loudon do, because they do first begin with their review of judging you in the, in the environment that you were taking your courses in. And if we impose a limit, they're not gonna be hurt by that. But, again, that's for a longer conversation, and with 3,000 colleges, there's gonna be some variation even in how they do things.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So with that, if you would like to offer any final remarks before we close out this evening's session, and thank you again for all you guys have done.
You're welcome. I wanna briefly point out Stella in the back, who's also a very helpful member of our committee. I didn't name her earlier. So, once again, thank you guys for humoring me for the last three years. It's been great. I really, I will ask you, the reason I'm here is I care about all kids, but I also especially care about the kids in my experience and the kids of the similar age group of mine, the ones I know and love and have volunteered with for years. Please help, because they're now in middle school. High school's a couple of years away. I really don't want people doing four, or five, six hours of homework a night and getting no sleep. I don't, I don't need that. They don't need that. And all the parents, all of my collegial parents essentially are in the same boat. Please help. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, thank you, and this evening's work session is adjourned.